Uh I mean, of course, I wanted to add our plan. Okay, who are you? Where are you from? Most people know who you are and what so we'll get into that, but. We just went on a riff about the pay raise thing. So you're a city councilman for what forever?
Eva Waipahu District nine.
District nine Eva Waipahu and hot ticket item recently was you guys were gonna get these huge pay like sixty four percent.
It went into effect July first sixty four percent raise yeah and for the last two months. I've been trying to advocate and trying to encourage my colleagues to do a memo, right? To hear the resolution that was supported by council member Angela Tupola. We introduce, you know, stopping that twelve percent pay raise also for the mayor's administration, you know, and ours. You know, and having a public discussion so that, you know, I think there's some flaws in the system. You know, and I think it's easy for um council members to hide behind a recommendation.
Okay.
You know.
Oh, I know I get re- if you guys like pay me more, but I never asked for them, right?
It's easy for do that, right?
Right.
Uh but at the end of the day, you know, it's you, the taxpayer, that's paying us to do the job, right? So you know, you can say, well, you know, there was hearings, but we all know that these hearings happen. When a lot of people are working, a lot of people not paying attention. We live busy lives.
How many people go to the hearing?
Uh depending on the issue.
But this like the about the raises, how many?
Uh because it was never on the agenda, uh you ne- people never got the chance and when it was. You know, we did this long hearing that went almost eleven hours. People waited, so by the time they spoke or get the chance to express how they feel, the place was empty. But the thing is, we had over three hundred written testimony. So like for me, I can understand why some council members felt like they needed that raise. But for me morally, I'm not speaking on behalf of them and I I don't want people to think that, you know, there's a there's a scrap between us guys in the council.
Yeah, yeah.
I honestly care about the people in my district and I go and work for the people in my district. I will always support. Things in my colleague's district, but this was something sixty four percent. That was kind of outrageous for me.
It's a big raise.
After sitting there for almost three years, understanding, wow, we short of a lot of things. People working in the city and county, uh police, right? We shot like three hundred something police officers. We're just coming out of one pandemic and we know that not everybody. Like excited to get back to work, right? We saw that in the last couple of weeks, the rental relief still happening, people still. You know, um bombarding the website so that they can get help and relief. Not only that, but the governor. Uh cut almost a billion, you know, in his budget for spending. So to me, the optics was wrong.
Okay.
I would have liked to see maybe a small raise.
Okay.
Like, you know, teachers, like forty percent or something like that, the teachers like so. You know, for me was just kind of like, I had to listen to the people in my district because that's who elected me. To uh oversee their money.
Yeah.
And a lot of them were saying this is wrong, Augie, and that's how I feel like I've led the last three years.
Yeah.
I try to be as transparent as possible. What I'm learning, I'm putting out there, so.
And you say, I hear you say, I am learning as I go. I I hear you say, or I don't follow a lot of politics, but I've heard, I've seen that approach from you.
And I think it's important. I think one of the things that I learned in the last three years that we don't do enough of that, right? So a lot of people don't know the difference between city and state. They don't federal, right? They don't know.
Yeah.
And as I'm learning, because I was told when I was running. Almost three years ago that I was, I gotta be able to answer the tough questions, right?
How can you know everything though?
You can't, but you have a staff. See, one of the things that I, the reason why I was against the races is because. You know, I get sixty eight thousand a year.
Yeah.
And I have a con allowance. Doesn't say if I'm working full or part time, it says I have to live in a district. I've I'm required to go to four committee. Meetings and neighborhood boards. So it doesn't say full or part time. I'm gonna tell you that as a council member. You gotta be on twenty falls a day. You get texts, I mean.
I just saw it.
It's constant, right?
Yeah.
But that's what we knew going in.
Right.
Like I knew going in that I was gonna make sixty eight thousand, gonna get on con allowance. But I can arrange my life so that I still can do my radio. I still can work on the weekends.
Yeah.
And not, nothing that I do conflicts with my job at the city council. Because I knew what my intention was going into it.
Yeah.
It wasn't gonna be on job. It was a calling. I'm gonna serve.
Yeah.
Yeah, so in that process, you heard the mayor said this, he's still learning about being mayor. I'm still learning about the ins and outs of city council, right? And as I'm learning, I'm letting people know because it helps me honestly understand my role. But like, you know, maybe there's flaws in it and maybe people in the community who we who pay us have like. Maybe different ideas on how they can help with solutions. So like. People always ask me like, how has it been? Like, I love it, honestly. You know, it's a little stressful. But I love it because being a city councilman gives you that hands-on ability like to. Really get into your community and maybe help change, maybe encourage.
It's this, you feel it. Is it like, is it like, like maybe like, you know, you grow your own food, you just feel better about it? And cause your hands are in the dirt and you're getting the feedback. Is it kind of like that from a community standpoint, like? Your hands are in the in the ground of the community?
That when you get people. Like stopping you at Safeway to tell you, thank you for putting speed humps in front of one school. It's like the most coolest thing. And mind you, thirty years of doing comedy. I always felt like it was important being on stage, making people laugh. Like I knew like I was bringing justice to everything that I was saying. Even though a lot of it was just kind of me telling stories of my, you know, crazy life. I knew, like, maybe if it's helping me and my own mental health. In this crazy life that I live, that it's helping somebody because I'm being truthfully honest on stage, right?
Yeah.
And I've had many cool stories, like I can tell you one, um and I. When I get these cool stars, I usually put them in the back of like uh ten of the CDs that I release and. Maybe almost maybe six or seven DVDs like on the box. So this one girl, um. She would come to my shows and then she had cancer.
Oh, man.
And I did a Mother's Day show and she really wanted for come. Because she said that every time she watched my DVDs made her feel better inside, right?
Yeah.
So the parents, she passed away, but the parents and the auntie, they all came to the show and they told me about that story. And you get those moments, you know, where like, wow, man, my comedy made a difference in somebody's life. Or there was a a former Hawaii resident who went to school in Seattle. And I would go and do comedy every year in Seattle. She would come, but a drunk driver on the mainland. And hit her car and she passed away. But the mom and dad, to honor her life, would still come to my comedy shows because.
You were the conduit for that. You're the comment, yeah.
Yeah, and I get, I have, I've had experiences, man, do where like. You know, guys who wanted to like really like beat up their kids or like even hurt them.
Yeah.
Because they came out and said they were gay and they watched the first DVD that I did like almost twenty years ago when I was kind of like open. And mind you, when I started talking about my gay son, I was dealing with that. You know, cause I grew up with four brothers, yeah.
And Hawaii is a place, so I I lived on the mainland, I I only, you know, I moved home after many years. And in California, it became very, everything's so polarized and political, yeah. When I came back home. You still people, hear people say, bro, so gay, or like. In a way, it's kind of refreshing because you don't have to be offended about everything.
Right.
But if you're that gay person, Hawaii Hawaii is a little antiquated in certain ways, right?
Yeah.
And so in one and in one way, we've been okay with having a gay cousin for the last fifty years.
Yeah.
But in another way, you still gonna get called gay like today in twenty twenty-three, so it's.
Right.
It's both things, right?
So you know, when I, when I started talking about that, it was kind of my way of like healing.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because like I said, in that, it's not like I go to bed every night going, please, Lord, give me, give me a ballerina. Let my son be the most amazing ballerina. No, you want. Do you wanna dream big for your kids? So for me, it was a healing process by not knowing. That me being absolutely honest on stage in my own healing process was gonna heal a lot of guys who wasn't ready. To take on the fact that their kids are gay.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh so.
So that gratitude you got from comedy, you feel a similar brand of it in what you do now.
Yeah, absolutely. But the 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 reward of uh. You know, I heard a thank you for fighting for us on this pay raise, like it's almost for me. I trip that people do that. They say that, like. You know, morally, it wasn't hard for me to go, eh, it's not right. But like, it just shows me that. People are looking for somebody to speak up for them, right?
Yeah.
People looking for the everyday God that understands the challenge of raising a family in Hawaii. How do you keep them here? How do we find ways to uh make our lives better, right?
Right, right.
And those little things like just saying no means a lot to people.
Let me, can I play devil's advocate?
Okay.
So and you, Dr. Tupola, I'm a big fan. I don't really know much about her.
Yeah.
Uh we we exchanged some Instagram messages and she said, yeah, I'll come in. And this whole content studio was real good. We had plywood on the window and she came in, she's like, what is this? But we had a great conversation and um she told me you should maybe have Augie on. I was like, oh, let him know, like. And so here we are, but she posted something about uh about the pay raises and I made a comment to her. I said, well, Dr. Tupola. You, you're special, like you, you're not an everyday person and. To have someone like you in there with your full capacity, your full mind and your full heart, I think you should get paid more. I want more Dr. Tupolas. I want, we raise the standard of that position and have the best, most brilliant minds and and hearts in there. If if money, which is just a represents resource, you know, shelter and food, if money can be increased and we get better people. Or or just more committed people during their term, then I'm for it because. I'm I operate in the capitalist ten ninety-nine self-employed world. I do real estate. And I don't think you should have a broke real estate agent, because there's all kinds of problems. They're gonna have commission breath. They may put their interests before yours. Uh I think your real estate agents should be doing pretty good for themselves. They probably represents their skill. And all sorts of reasons, right? I kind of was happy to see people like you and her, the two who I feel some kind of connection with, make more money. And yeah, you say, oh, it's not full time or it it's it's undeclared, it's ambiguous, it's arbitrary, but. I I just witnessed you, you know, fielding calls. I saw the people down there stop you. I saw them stop. I know, when you were describing your life, it sounded like a busy real estate agent. You're like, yeah, I can go do stuff on Saturdays, but also gotta always have my phone. Why not make more?
No, look, I agree with you, but that's the discussion we should have had prior to.
Not just give them, not just send them, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, when you go and you apply for a job, you know the specific idea and what you're getting yourself involved in, right? We never touched that.
Right, right.
We never even touched that. Like, that's why, like, I was not against a raise, like, but like, maybe. You know, we could have done it like in increments.
Yeah, and you said earlier the optics, right? Like whether even maybe eventually getting to the raise you're at. Yeah, okay, but in one fail swoop, that's hard optics, right?
For everybody to see.
In Hawaii where people struggling.
Correct, correct. And even though it's justifiable, right? To what the commission's saying, still, how you got, you gotta still sell that to the to the general audience.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? You gotta sell that.
Delivery matters.
See, and that's why, like. I was told when running for office, you gotta be able to answer the tough questions, right? So that's a tough question. You should ask your council member, tell me why you deserve sixty four percent. Right? Tell me why. And you should be able to, man, I did this, I do that, I did my, but but this, but we know more that it's. You get elected by. The people every four years to attend. Four committees.
Yeah.
And go to your neighborhood boards and um unfortunately, because you have an. Very honorable job, people will call you, gotta, and that's why I have a staff. I have a staff that you. You guys watching.
Yeah.
Almost a half a million.
For your staff alone?
Yes.
That's just your district.
Just, yeah, everybody's district. They have, we have a budget.
Each district has.
Yes.
That's so that's times thirteen or something.
That's right. And that's why, if you go back and you watch the testimony, I kind of broke down. You know, how much money. That we get to help nine council members.
Yeah.
So we have the resources, right? And that's why, like. It's an honorable job, but we don't want. I I, well, me, maybe people do. I don't know. I don't want a career politician.
Yeah.
I want somebody who gonna come in, understand life, understand. That his or her focus should be in the district, being relatable. You know, eh, I heard, oh, like, you know, when I hear. People or colleagues talk about like, you know, people attacking us because you guys, we put it out there, the sixty-four and. Hmm, like.
I'm sure you, yeah, talk about tough questions. I'm sure you had some tough conversations with your stance, huh?
Oh, no, I mean, that's the thing, right? I, in the last two months, I had maybe. I'm gonna be honest with you guys, five or six people that said, ah, take the raise. But most of people said, yeah, most people said, oh, thank you, man.
But even your colleagues, they weren't like, bruh, shut up.
Oh.
I don't, don't put anyone out there, but I say in general, I could imagine where.
I've had, I've had people call me and go, you know, well, I I've had emails, I'm not gonna say it from who, but like. You gotta get along with everybody.
Yeah.
You know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna cause problems and. But I think that's the reason why people distrust politics and politicians now.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, they know that kind of stuff goes on and. Look, I remember when I was running, people attacked, called me a clown.
Yeah.
You know, only doing this for publicity. I had no idea that I spent most of my life. Doing comedy, but the things that I did outside. So like. Getting here. Uh has been an awesome journey of learning something new at fifty-five, right? But I think what led me here, the criticisms, uh the hard work. The challenges about raping the family, uh has helped me like kind of balance.
Yeah.
Everything, right? Like, I know you in the public eye, you gonna get criticized, whether you like it or not. Whether you right or wrong, they're gonna attack, or they're gonna find ways to attack you. You gotta be able to like. Ignore that.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, you know, your concern is what's happening in your community.
Right.
You know, am I listening? Am I doing everything that I'm capable of doing to make. Evan Waipahu a better place to live, keeping the mayor accountable to the spending, you know, being transparent. As a city councilman, that's, that's it.
The more you talk about it, the more, so my knee-jerk reaction was, yeah, I I like, I actually doctor to a doctor. Doctor Tupola, you should make more. That's my knee-jerk reaction, but I just went over with him today, profit and loss balance sheet. How when you scale things up, your return, your return diminishes. So if you sell one house, maybe you can keep most of that. You have a whole business with an office and lights and cameras. You sell a lot of houses, but your margins get lower and. One thing I know is that when you issue these raises and you increase stuff like that, it's hard to take it away.
Yeah.
And so to your point, and I'm very results-based. Results is one of my core values, so. If we're achieving the results at the current pay scale, and it's not a career job, like you're saying. Maybe you don't need that raise, and or maybe it needs to be smaller. Because once you pull that lever and and all that money's out there to to go the other direction and get it back. Oh, we're having a rough economic year, we're gonna pay less. Oh, good luck, right? Good luck, yeah.
It's right. There's no way you can take back the hundred thirteen thousand.
Wow.
Cannot.
Yeah.
Right? That's my fear in making career politicians.
Of course.
You know what I mean? Like.
Hello, everyone. This is Derek Okahashi, host of Podcast Hawaii. Thank you for listening. I hope you're enjoying the show. I have two things to ask. Whether you're listening to this on a streaming platform or on YouTube, please go comment and follow and do all the things to gas us up and keep us going. And in that comment, let me know who you'd like for me to have a conversation with next. Is there an interesting university professor? Someone who owns a business, a controversial person, a politician, whoever you wanna see on this show, please let me know in the comment section of whatever platform you're on. Also, I am a real estate agent and a real estate team leader. My small team, Core Team Hawaii, is one of the top real estate teams in all of Hawaii. So if you have anything in real estate, if you have any need at all in real estate, please think of Core Team Hawaii first. Go to coreteamhawaii.com. The link will be in the description of all of these shows moving forward. Book a call with me. Let's get you taken care of in real estate. Back to the show.
I'm trying to think about what you just said. Because there's a lot in there, um. Gosh, let me, give me a moment.
No, yeah.
Because, no, because you you, your return on interest stuff like.
You're, yes.
Spark something, so.
So you should look at results, right? So if in real estate, I'm looking at what results are we having? Where would we spend money?
I got it, I got it.
How would we get the results better?
So all through the debate the last two months, I, you heard. You want a dedicated city council member, full-time, focusing on one thing and one thing only.
That's kind of what I say, yeah.
You're businessman.
Yeah.
How many guys under you do the same thing?
Do, do what?
Like exactly the same, like, of course, we want employees, like, I've 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 always worked privately, right? I have a hard time working for somebody because, you know, you like be the boss.
Yeah.
Right? And your whole goal, when you start a business, you like, I go find four other Augies that have the same mindset.
No.
Right, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, like.
Does, and in fact, if if there are two people like me, if I I couldn't be partnered with them. We're not, we, there's not enough room at the table for two of me, you know?
So the return with the city council, so the notion was, pay me double, I'm gonna work as hard, I work just as hard.
Unlikely.
Right, so what you're saying too.
Double, not, you're not, just because you pay double, that means you're gonna work double.
And what you're saying, you're just saying to the general public, who I think is so smart, who I think should be getting involved. And and really like finding good people to work for you, right? What you're saying is that the last fifty years.
Right now, half-assing.
Every city council member never do their job.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? That's so that's one thing. That's what I said, like. And second, oh, we're gonna find the best and the brightest. When did the best and the brightest ever fix government? So.
Or it's not if they do choose to participate, it's not, it's not for sixty four thousand, it's not for a hundred fourteen thousand. It's for the mission.
Yes, it's a calling.
Yeah.
You ca- you're called to serve, you're public servant.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not my job. In four years, I gotta ask you, man, I get two terms. I get two terms, prove to you that I did the best that I could. When people call me and they go, eh, get this pothole over here. Or they yell, I go, why are you yelling at me?
Yeah.
I don't feel potholes.
Yeah.
I don't feel, tell me what you need so I can tell the mayor's administration.
Yeah.
Right? Why are you yelling at me?
Yeah.
You know, so. That's why, like. It doesn't equate.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
What if we did them this way? What if we, you start sixty four thousand, one term? If you get re-elected because they like you, you make more the next term. Uh but if if people don't re-elect you, then back to someone who gets to start at the ground, at the mailroom.
Again, this.
Could could that happen in government?
It could with a, with an open debate, which never happened, right?
I gotta come.
Sixty-four, you gotta go over there, you gotta tell, you gotta tell salary commission that, you know, maybe you got them this way or that way.
Yeah.
You know, and that's why, like, that's why it's so important. You know, in this last couple of months, when people called and you saw how upset people were.
Yeah.
Maybe there's people in government that think, eh, they gonna forget. And they might, see.
People, it's so busy. We're in such a iPhone world and everyone's working hard just to make it. Maybe people are gonna forget. But doesn't mean the impacts are gonna stop.
Yeah, I don't know. I think that's a tough one.
Yeah.
I think, I think this has been one of the biggest arguments, you know, the sixty four percent raise that I can remember. Maybe the last one was real.
I, yeah, well, what a. So, alright, so you, you are Augie T.
I am Augie T.
I I I knew you from when I was a kid, so he, he's from the mainland.
He has no idea.
He ne- he was like, he never even know. And so I, I knew you from when I was a kid, um teenager.
Yeah.
And my stepmom, her name's Joyce Okahashi, she worked upstairs uh. In Harbor Court, right? Used to work over there, right? She was in the, she was the nurse for the, cause she was like, had gotten sick, so she couldn't be on the floor. She was a nurse for like the mailroom or something. Or no, sorry, for um.
Like call a nurse.
Disease control, or like you you drank bleach or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And she's like, oh, yeah, I see Augie in the mailroom. I was like, no way, you see, you don't know him. She's like, yeah, he's a nice guy. So I knew you from that and then I I left for a long time. I was in the Coast Guard, came back and now I see you doing this. What?
By the way, thank you for your service, man.
Ah, thank you. Thank you for yours. What, what, why did you do this? Like, how, did someone present it to you? I don't even know what a city council person was.
That is such a, I love answering that question because a lot of people like you had no idea that. Even despite doing what I did as far as comedy and entertainment, I always had one job.
I knew you had a job.
At sixteen years old, I worked at Kapialani Medical Center. I stayed there for almost sixteen years.
Oh, wow.
And if I stayed, do the math, I probably would be there almost like forty years. So.
Wow.
I started there when I was sixteen, right? I bought my first home like at twenty-two because I.
Really?
Had credit.
Oh.
Right? Yet, yet credit. And I had no idea. I grew up in public housing, right? Raised my family.
What housing you've lived in?
Campford Housing. So I grew up in Campford Housing.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, uh. My mom and dad, my mom went to Farrington, my dad only went up to the fourth grade. So this education stuff. Never heard it. Just watched my mom and dad work, right? But my dad always used to tell me and my brothers. You work hard, it's gonna pay off. Very simple man, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Just saw him work his tail off, Filipino man, coming out grouchy. Right? If you work harder than anybody else, your dreams gonna come true. Uh so education was nothing. They never talked about it, you know, maybe because they thought, oh, it's not a bill. Right? Just get out, you eighteen, get out. I had this, had this all through my life. My dad never even owned a watch and he did this. He's like, hey, 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 almost time for you to get the hell out of my house. Was like that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, hard work, paying attention, uh but I knew I was gonna be an entertainer. Uh when I first saw a comedian do comedy live. Was uh on Maui. My dad used to send me away to Maui every summer because he never liked the kids I was hanging around with. And my cousins were uh older, so he sent me there thinking they're gonna be good influence, not knowing they all smoke pakalolo, look at porno, you know, and then. So he had no idea because they're older, right?
Right, right.
But my auntie went to a concert, Yvonne Element, who had like, she's from Hawaii. Her big hit in the movie Saturday Night Fever was uh, you know, um. Yv- Yvonne Element, uh she had a, she had a song, but no, when number one, she was from Hawaii. And she was touring and Andy Bumitai was the opening act.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was fourth grade. My auntie took me to Yvonne Element, you know, and I sat there and I was, I was so blown away. That one guy who kind of looked like me.
Yeah, yeah.
I was telling jokes, making all these people laugh. I was like, that's what, that's what I like be.
Yeah.
That's what I like be. And I just remember going back home, my cousins were all into booga booga. They were all into Hawaii comedy. So it was like almost a God-given thing, like I, I give you this gift.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and and that was it. I was like so mesmerized by comedy.
Yeah.
I had George Carlin um CDs, Bill Cosby, Rap, Andy Frank. So any talent competition that was held in school, I was gonna do local comedy.
Yeah.
And that progressed, you know, I I was also. And that progressed, you know, I, I was also, um, an amateur boxer, so I won the eighty-five Golden Gloves in Hawaii.
Oh, yeah?
And the United States ABF, no, Kali Valley.
Oh, okay.
So, and then I had six professional fights, so I, you know, I, I, I got to like fight at the highest level of. Competition, right? Turning professional.
Yeah.
Fighting as a professional boxer. So learning, uh, this discipline of. Like the hardy train, like my coach Donald Sark told me, kind of like what my dad said, if you come in first to this gym and you finish last. You're gonna be amazing. You might not be road champion, but you're gonna be an amazing person because you understand the ethics of hard work.
Right.
And not giving up, and not failing, learning from your mistakes. Boxing did that.
Yeah.
You know, this is a one-on-one thing, like, you, you gotta like take out all your insecurities because you can lose walking into the ring.
Yeah, teaches you so much.
Yeah.
You know Ronald Richardson?
Yes.
Ron was my boxing coach.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And when I went Kalakaua and we walked in and, we had boxed for a year at the Police Academy on Wa'ahu. And when I walked in with him, it was like a movie, like guys come, that's Ron Richardson right there. Bro, that's Ron, we didn't see him a long time. Guy come up to him. He came up to him, he's like, hey Ron, we still get your locker. And I was like, oh, he's a legend, huh? The Richardson Brothers, I guess, in, in Kaliihi, he's so.
I think the dad, uh, coached some kids up in Kali Valley too.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
They, he's still, he's, he's in his sixties now, seventies maybe, shredded, eight pack, moving around, that salpa. Like he's, he's, but anyways, he taught me how to box and a lot of, some of the things it taught me was. How to, how calm is efficient. You hurry up, hurry up, go do, that's not, you, you're gonna gas out.
Yeah.
You have to be calm, breathe.
Yeah.
Assess, and you actually can get it done sooner. So sometimes I might like spill water in the car and I go. Pick him up slow, because I know if I rush, you know, and I get, I attribute that to boxing. Yeah, boxing teaches, fighting teaches you a lot of things.
A lot of things, right? Conditioning will win for me, Muhammad Ali.
Yeah.
Uh.
So how, yeah, so how did, one thing I'm seeing, the trend is, you're an obsessive person, and that's, I like, I, cause I'm, I have that, I share that, right? So you've been obsessed with comedy, fighting, you worked because you had to.
Yeah.
And now, how did that parlay into, I'm gonna be obsessed with helping my community?
My daughter.
Ever not even your original community, right?
I grew up in Kali, and I lived in Wa'ini for a while, and, uh, moved to Eva. Man, I've been there over twenty-something years now.
Oh, yeah?
Love it, yeah. Yeah, I'm telling people, eventually I'll get to Hawaii Law Ridge, but I'm, eventually. You know, uh, I remember ten years ago, my daughter, my youngest, in, you know, got bullied. And my kids have always been bullied because dad has always been in the limelight, you know, they all think that my kids get money. And it's tough raising a family in Hawaii, and people think, I made all this money and I did okay. You know, I, I send kids to school with some of the things that I've done, I raised money for different fundraisers, but like. You know, I'm an everyday guy that's trying to support the kids, send them to school, do whatever I can to, you know, make ends meet.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, about ten years ago, my daughter, Mahelani, started a foundation called Brave. So Brave is an acronym to be respectful and value everyone.
Wow.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, so she was bullied. She was into pageants and kids bullied her, called her fat, called her names and. You know, my wife identified some of the things that was happening, happening to her, she was doing things differently, you know, and. We're very involved in our children's lives, you know, so, uh, we found out that was happening. Um, we helped her, uh, and one of the things that we don't do enough because we live such busy lives, parents. Kind of watch for those little changes in character, you know, in their children, like, ask them like, what's going on? You okay?
Yeah.
You know, um, so her attitude started changing and, um, we, we knew we found out what was happening.
Yeah.
And, uh, stopped that immediately, right? And.
But how can?
Gave her a lot of confidence, just knowing that mom and dad is involved.
Yeah.
Right? Like, hey, we got your back. So that gives kids so much. And then for her to speak up on it, right? Build confidence. So she wrote a book when she was eleven years old. She illustrated, wrote a book, and then she started, like, reading this book to elementary school kids.
The bullying was happening from that age?
Yeah, so, well, no, when she, when, once she learned how to deal with the emotion, and we helped her out, right?
Yeah.
She turned her negative to a positive, so she wrote a book.
Yeah.
She wrote a book called, um, It's Okay to Be Different. It's based on minor birds and an owl, right? And you know how minor birds flock together, do things, they look alike.
Wow.
And there's one minor bird that decided, I'm gonna hang out with an owl, do things differently, and then they become friends. So she wrote this book, she illustrated it, and started doing it to little kids and, uh. And then pretty soon, they're like, can you do middle school? But she was, she wasn't even a middle school student.
Wow.
So she asked me, can you, can you go and do middle school and maybe high schools? Well, her and my wife, they're the boss, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you, and the last thing I wanted to become is Frank De Lima.
Uh.
Cause Frank De Lima does his cool stuff.
All the schools, right?
And I would like be that guy, like.
That's Frank's thing.
Yeah, that was Frank.
That's Frank's thing.
He'll take you on a Buddha hunt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Take you, you know, he gonna do peanut butter and jelly with you. My thing was like, I like the aspect of not seeing black and white, like be. Writing comedy in a gray area, taking you on the edge and then letting you hang there for a moment. I never swear in my act. I try not to do anything vulgar, but like, I like that space. I just didn't want to like do that.
Yeah.
You know, and I, cause I knew was gonna bring out a lot of stuff that I had to deal with. Cause I understood that comedy and stuff that you do in front of an audience, if you BSing, people can smell that.
Comedy, you get instant feedback.
Yeah.
And, and maybe you crush with one crowd, and the next crowd it doesn't hit, but it's up to you to meet them where they at, right?
And you gotta be truthful, and you gotta be, you know, transparent, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And if you're saying something that's not real, I, people can smell that.
Yeah.
And I never like, I knew like, if I gotta relate to a middle school kid, I gotta tell a story about when I was in middle school.
So you gotta peel back that onion now?
And then, high school started calling. Now I gotta go talk about stuff that can be relatable to high school, like, never thinking that that was going. Get me to where I'm at right now. In middle school, being dyslexic, being bullied, being molested. Right? It's something that no kid like talk about.
Right.
Right? But I knew like, the more deep I got into it, the more healing. And in high school, I had to talk about, you know, my brother taking his life, suicide. I had to talk about all those things, because you're not, I gotta relate, teen pregnancy. I got my girlfriend pregnant when. I was sixteen years old. I had to take responsibility for one kid who gonna be forty next year, right? When I was sixteen years old, because my dad was like, dude, that's your fault.
Yeah.
You know, I had to learn how to get there. Not everybody gonna get the same ride as me and gonna get lucky, but. Take your responsibility, wrong or right, teaches you amazing things, and I knew like. Oh, man, I gotta go talk about this, I gotta find one message.
Yeah.
You know, to kids about suicide, how it affected me when my brother took his life, not knowing that. It was gonna take me on the path to where I'm at right now.
So that, that led to public.
And then I started going to schools and I was like, how is things getting so much worse? Like, I grew up in public housing.
Right, right.
Tough life, like, why is things so bad? Why is so much, I remember when I only had one homeless guy, and that homeless guy, my dad would use as an example, you know? We're all sitting in the back of the car.
Yeah.
And my dad driving, and he would stop, and he'd look at, hey, see the hobo?
Yeah.
And we look, he would say hobo, right? Cause they had no filter. That's what happens if you know, work hard.
Yeah.
Hey, you know, study hard, like be like that, and we know, we smart kids, like, no.
Yeah, yeah.
And my mom was more the compassionate one, but like, I was like, how is this even possible? And aren't every generation supposed to be getting better? Like, I, you know what I mean? So like, for my whole mission, for my kids, like, give them the best opportunity.
Yeah.
Like, go college. I don't care if I gotta struggle. Let go private school, go, make right decisions.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Let me give you the best shot, you know, so. My daughter said, why don't you use a celebrity for good, when they created Brave?
Yeah.
Why don't you run for office? Why don't you serve?
Power, what, that's Mahelani.
Yeah.
She's, she sounds powerful.
You gotta interview her next.
How old is she now?
Twenty-three, so she's a flight attendant for Hawaiian Airlines, and, and she's, uh, pursuing, going back to school again, the, to, you know, like. She wants to be a doctor, I, you know, I encourage all my children, even as adults, whatever I can do for help. You gotta, but you gotta be persistent.
Yeah.
I, you know, cause I don't like enable, I hate that.
Yeah.
You know, tough love, because this world is not nice.
No.
You know, and, uh, so she said, why don't you run for office? Had no idea. Dude, I won this election, we raised. I would say honestly, my opponent who, uh, was a long time senator, twenty years, had like a lot of money in his. In his war chest, I, I think we won this election with like forty thousand, it was just hard work, knocking on doors. Letting people know, like, this is how I feel. I understand, my mom and dad live in my house, my dad has dementia. He worked hard for the city and county all his life, but he cannot afford to pay his medical bills and rent. How is that even possible?
Yeah.
I have four, five kids, they never gonna be able to buy their own home right now at the pace they're going. And, and the jobs that they have, they gotta move away. Uh, what about rail? Ten billion in the hole, what we gonna do about that?
Yeah.
Police, you know, so all of this became very personal for me.
Yeah.
And now it was hard to write comedy, because now, uh, I have empathy.
Yeah, yeah.
And I never saw that when I was writing, I couldn't care less.
Right.
I would find a gray area. There's no black and red, black and white.
Hard to make fun of it when you.
Yes.
The one trying to affect the change, right?
So when people go, eh, eh, I, I can't, it's hard.
Yeah.
I gotta put that all on the side, and I do it, I still do it. I haven't written a lot, I do it because I wanna bring encouragement.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it helps me. People don't realize that me getting on stage, expressing, uh, helps me.
Therapeutic, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, wow. How, so I rode rail, did you ride rail yet?
Not yet.
We, I rode the rail, and, yeah, I lived in the San Francisco Bay Area for a long time, so when I was away. We, there was a train over there, and, and I, I would, I'm, I'm always looking at devil's advocate. If everyone thinks something, and I'm gonna try to think the other way, I just, I. That's a sickness, a blessing, whatever. But I looked at it like, well, rail evokes some Hawaiian values, right? Like, Malamaaina, hopefully, there's less emissions, um, cruise them, chill. You can just get on there, put in your. AirPods, listen to Aggie T and just cruise, and, cause I experienced that on the mainland. You can bike and be healthy, and bike to the rail and then catch rail. And so I was like, devil's advocate, I was like, ah, rail's good. And then as I moved home, and I see this ugly thing, and I'm like, yeah. And then I learned, I learned, then I'm like, start thinking about, they started in Eva, why they starting, why they go in town? Like, at least if they stop halfway and it's in town. And then I realized the cost, and, and then as time went on, I was like, I'm less and less of a proponent of it. But anyways, I read, I rode it the other day, and it's nice and clean, uh, because. It'll eventually get dirty, I know, but it's nice and clean, some cool views of Eva and, and Pearl Harbor. If you work Waipahu and, or if you live Waipahu and work Pearl Ridge is great for the one percent of people that are, are that. But, uh, I don't know, I, I've mixed, I always wanna be open minded, I don't wanna just be, ah, rail's junk, ugly.
No.
That's not old Hawaii, but, but some of that's true too, it is, you know, so.
I was like.
Is rail good for Eva, for your district? Is it good for Hawaii?
When Mufi Hanaman started talking about the choo-choo train, right? I kind of was like on board, cause I rode the bus every day.
Yeah, okay.
To work, right? And, and I shared this my first year working at the council. Why am I such a critic on rail? First off, we never completed on time with ten billion over budget. And that's not how families in Hawaii operate. We all are going Lamborghini, we're not gonna get them, sorry.
Yeah.
Right? We gotta get what we make and what we paying for, right? So as the years went by, like you, I was like, man, we paying, we investing all these things. All this money and this, this is what we got.
Where else could ten billion have gone?
Right, delays. So for me, I'm not a critic, I would like to see this thing finish. You know, because I know the valley like you.
We're part committed now, right?
Right. I've traveled, but you gotta be transparent. Stop, be honest with the public moving forward.
Yeah.
Right? So for me, why I thought and what they sold me on ten something years ago, maybe more than that. I rode the bus every day, I believe in the bus, I believe in public transportation. This is before cell phones, right? I was on the bus and I watched this brother, and mind you, the same people ride the bus every day.
Yeah, yeah.
Watched this brother sitting on his, um, his bucket, cause he was a construction worker, going accident in Honaka Halle. I watched this guy panic. I watched this guy panic.
And lose his job.
He gonna lose his job. I don't know how many times he was late for work, and I watched the fear in his face. And I just thought about his family, I thought about. Just his own personal mental health, what's going on right now, cause he was losing his mind.
Yeah.
And I thought, maybe this was gonna be one way to maybe help with that.
Yeah.
Right? Jump on the rail, you go another way, you have all these different ways to take cars off the road.
To take cars off the road?
Right.
Yeah.
And honestly, stimulate the economy, bring money to the city and the state by building around, uh, rail.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, we just have the biggest bus connector on the planet. You travel, I travel.
Yeah.
You get on, you get on the rail.
Bus connect.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
And why they starting Eva?
You don't take the bus, after you, you get off, you walk a couple of blocks, you're at work.
Yeah.
And you get on, you don't take one bu- I don't know who gonna park their car. Get on the bus, go on rail, get off the rail, and then go on bus to go work.
You know what? I did that in the Bay Area a little bit, but because the traffic was a troll, like.
Yeah.
I mean, from where I live to get to Stanford in rush hour.
Mm-hmm.
Over two hours.
Yeah.
So, and, and so we never want Hawaii to become so bad that you're forced to drive rail, bus, bus, rail, drive, but like. It's only because we're so bad, that's why I did it.
Here's what we know, right? When college is out, the freeway.
Chigo?
Nice, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So why aren't we, why aren't we focusing on West Oahu right now?
Why they never start in town?
Why not? But where we at right now with the rail, right? Why don't we start thinking? How do we keep jobs on this side of the island for people coming in?
Yeah.
How do we bring what we have at UH Manoa here, so we get people off the road?
Yeah.
Right now, how, every time you go on a rail, you start seeing stuff, like what. West Oahu could look like with, you know, maybe schools that go vertical. I don't know. Maybe affordable, not, and I hate this, because I think we take care of affordable, like. How do we build for middle-class families? You know, they're gonna live and work play in our community.
Yeah.
That's the kind of vision right now we should be talking about.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, instead, we talk, we hearing like how Howard Hughes could see sue now because of the, where the rail line is going.
Really?
Uh, uh, we gotta go get more funding to get to Ala Moana.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? People not, we should be, we should be really. Talking about what it could look like on this island, island. There's so much people that drive out on the west side that come into town.
Right.
You know, where there's buses that can get you out of, uh, every morning, cause I do morning radio. The first thing they say is, you know, on Fort Weaver and Kualawaka, that's where I live.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? And not saying, you know, downtown, out of Fort Weaver.
Yeah.
How do you get those guys to get out of their car to go ride rail? See?
It's a culture shift.
Correct. Or, like, how do we move jobs on the southern island so that we can go there?
Yeah.
You know, that's all the kind of stuff that, uh, I hope our administration is thinking about.
Yeah.
Or whoever gonna be our next leaders, like, can focus on, instead of, you know, kicking the can down the road. Hey, we gonna get to Manoa, no, but what we gotta do now to alleviate traffic so that. Hey, we gonna get to Manoa, no, but what we gotta do now to alleviate traffic so that. Man, I think West Oahu, right? Is prime and ready. When you rode the rail, so much land get. We get enough land to be sustainable in farming and. Living clean and also finding ways to create good jobs. You know, living wage jobs so that people can stay here. You know, go take somebody with vision, go take somebody with um balls, bro. You know, to not do the status quo, but like really think outside the box. And and challenge people like we gotta do this together, you gotta shout, set a dream, people. We gotta get people to dream again. You know what I mean, like?
Yeah, invigorated, there's it's a community that's invigorated and optimistic, like like post nine eleven. The energy that ran through the country, and I know it's more visceral on the east coast, but even in Hawaii, I grew up in Eva. I remember that day, my dad was like, you wanna go to school, I was going Campbell. And I was like, yeah, I don't think anybody going bomb Campbell, I think we good. But the energy after that, everyone was just positive, how do we build, how do we better? And how do you create that, that, how do you let that permeate through a community without tragedy causing?
Let me ask you this, what did you learn through the pandemic?
What did I learn through the pandemic? Man, that's a good question, what did I learn, I learned that. It just emphasized for me how tribal people are, how the audacity of everyone to think they know, like everybody's an expert. The audacity of everyone to think that government knows and is not corrupt at all. The how humans can all buy into something. Which could be a negative thing or it could be a very positive thing, but but mostly I think I saw a negative. And I and I learned. For me, my personal experience is I learned that if I bet on myself. Uh, I have a lot more in me than I previously thought. Cuz it it, I was working at a hospital, I used to, I used to do x-ray. And so I generally don't like to talk about, I've only been doing real estate three years cuz everybody think I've been doing them ten cuz we're pretty successful, yeah. But uh, I had my license the year before COVID and. I was always like, I'm gonna go all in, it's one day, I'll go all in one day, I wasn't really having any results. When COVID happened, they at Queens, they wouldn't let you wear a mask. I I brought my own in ninety five cuz I and after I was also, I took off my mask earlier than most people too, but before when I had no. Data, I was like, I'm masked to Safeway, I remember in in uh Ever Ever Beach Safeway, guys going, what is that, bro, COVID? And then next couple of weeks, they shut the world down, I was wearing it ninety five before all that happened and. Um, they said you cannot, I said, why, I said, well, you're gonna scare the patients, I said, yeah, but if this thing is airborne. And we got a room full of chest x-rays, guys the x-ray. And they're like, you cannot, you cannot wear it, and I said, okay, I quit then, and I went all out in real estate and. And I saw a lot of people did that, a lot of people chose a different path in COVID and some found themselves, right? So those are the thing, you know what I also learned too is. You can wreck, you could wreck a family or damage a family, so I know you can wreck and damage a community. By locking them down and killing their hope, scaring them, trying to scare them.
We saw businesses shut down, right, not ever recover. And we saw. An industry thrive during COVID, film in Hawaii. We lost tourism, right, we lost uh some construction. People were filming clean. And we have this opportunity to, the film industry brings in almost four hundred million. Yes.
Really?
Yes, and one series is equivalent to almost thirty thousand visitors a year. So we had an opportunity to create another leg. To not only give living wage jobs to people on outside of the island because we heard about how. You know, uh, the Sea Rider production, well known, right, doing all these. My kids are part of that. But there's no jobs for them. Yet, we have the most creative minds, greatest eyes for editing, we have amazing stories. Everybody wants to come to Hawaii for film, you know why? Because it's the perfect place for weather and they come in and they leave. Because most of the jobs are on the mainland, right, but you bring in one industry that can develop, and sometimes we get so, it's not about. Film, it's about all the people that attach to film. The cooks, the set builders, electricians, right? And then there's the kids understanding how to, you know, uh, edit, they're learning code. We need that, we need guys in the middle to know how to read and do codes. You know, like, we have this industry that's ready. They can build us another amazing industry, right, that can tell our story. You're Jason Momoa filming right now in New Zealand, he could have easily done it there, we don't want the infrastructure for that, and yet. We had four series going on in Hawaii. Doogie Hauser.
Doogie Hauser is here.
Yeah, I was here, yeah, Doogie Hauser, right, we had. Magnum, we had Hawaii Five O at one point, and we had like all these other small ones that we're doing. And yet we don't want the infrastructure to do posts, and the pre can do posts.
So you say you can do pre, you can get, prepare, shoot, but all the posts like coloring.
In case there's another pandemic, we have another business initiative that's thriving. More, I have more unemployment in my district, everyone Waipahu than any other place, that's why. Getting back to the sixty four percent raise, I saw it firsthand, I had emails. People still coming in line for. Our children was given this opportunity to like learn all these new things in film, social media. And yet. We don't even have the infrastructure for that, and this could be another thing that not only. Show Hawaii to the world, but like, man, we could be the next, you know, Hollywood of the Pacific.
I think that mindset matters, we can be anything. You know, there's all kinds of quotes, right, he who believes he can and he who believes he can are both usually right. Oprah is like, oh, the secret, if you think you can, you can, I read this book in real estate and he explained how the reticular activating system. So like if you buy one white Yoda and we're friends, I'm gonna start noticing white Toyota's. If you become a council, city council member, I think, oh, maybe I can too. Dude, this mindset matters, everyone's capable of so much more.
That's another thing that I wanted to really get across in my first term is that I hope. That a simple boy from Kalihii. That every, had every opportunity in life, even though there's so much shortcomings. Can achieve good things because of just good ethics, working hard. You can do all the things you love doing and still serve your community. Serve. You know what I mean, and I hope that people watching, you know, cuz there're plenty of smart people in Hawaii. But if you're passionate, get involved, that's the only way, the real way. Right, we can get positive changes in our government. Because people matter. You know what I mean, like? I think some people love titles. Council member, senator, representative. In a real world, Derek, what's up, man? Right, there's no looking down, looking up. And I think, you know, for me, like, I get people, council member, like, call me Augie. I think easy for enjoy titles, right? But at the end of the day, but we servants, we here for help, we here for listen. And and learn and maybe make positive change. If there's one thing, like I I just announced I was gonna run for reelection. Because I feel like there's so much more work that I can do, and I only get two terms, so and.
Oh, it's limited at two.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna run for a second term. Um, I can continue to be, and I calling it the three Ts, everybody know my last name is Toba, that's my family name. But T also stands for trust, I would always. Always be, I'm I'm trustworthy. You can count on that, right, truthful, gonna always be truthful and transparent. I calling it the three Ts, truth, trust and transparency. Because I just hope that more and more people would get involved and run. Run, man, you learn so much about yourself, you learn so much about how much. More we need to fix government.
I'm inspired, I like run. I, you know, I I I grew up in Eva, bullied sometimes too. Now, yeah, I boxed after and it gave me some confidence, I did jujitsu for years after. So between boxing, jujitsu, nah, just an uncle and I'm not gonna fight anybody anyways, but. I I wanna, I I kinda wanna go Campbell and talk to kids and tell them like, or better yet, I would like to invite Max to come tell them, like. You guys like scrap at Ever Beach Park after, like, focus, you know, your energy elsewhere and. And and when I heard you saying how you did those speeches, I was just thinking like, I wanna have that impact on kids cuz. You know, you went Farrington? I went Campbell, like, sometimes you cannot learn, you know, you cannot learn if you're trying to survive. At these kinda, you know. And so I like to have that impact and as obsessive a person.
No, you get the tools, right, sometimes we think we don't want the tools, the tools is relatability, that's it. Let me sit down at the table, right? And just share, and we're gonna find some sort of connection. And when we get that connection, that's when we take the first steps to greatness or first steps to like success. You know, I I think. If we put a retired policeman off, a retired police officer in every cafeteria. You know, every time there's a disruptive student, like, send him to the caf, no, send him to an office, cuz when you walk into an office, you already know, I'm gonna get schooling. Send him to a cafeteria, I'm gonna get uncle, uncle, uncle Kelo, or you know, uncle policeman over there, and he gonna be like, what's going on? And that way, the teacher, right, now can focus on doing her job is educating the kids. Who like listen and get educated, we'll take the disruptive student, we'll send him to the cafeteria, put some uh, you know, uh, potato fritters over there, just talk story.
That was me, they want to kick me out of Campbell. I know, it wasn't fighting, selling drugs, they wanted to kick me out of Campbell, just cuz I was I was disruptive.
And then, but if you get somebody, and I think. You might inspire that kid to become a police officer, like, that guy took time for listen. Right, he never punished me, he just said, listen, and pretty soon you're gonna start, I believe, we'll start seeing. The challenges is at home.
My wife is a teacher, she always says, you know what, you can tell, it starts at home.
I saw like, man, I hope the governor, you listening? That's my idea right there. Put some retired police officers in there, right, and we can get disrupted, go send them, let them talk story. Let them, let them, let them, let them, let them, let them talk. And you find out.
Hey, there's some boy to have a a strong man like that, just have a conversation once a week with a strong man, some some boys don't have that, right? They don't have that at home.
I mean, how much resource is that, and maybe, again.
How many high schools we have on the island?
Over two hundred, I think, we have over two hundred public schools.
Public schools, but high schools, for example, probably like fifteen.
Put them all, put, put.
But you probably get fifteen retired police officers that would volunteer for come do that.
Just to sit down and say, how how can I help, uh, you know, talk to some kid who just really maybe needs somebody for listen? That's all. You know what I mean, like, and the disruptive one, I was like scrap. I'll take you a place where you can go and exert your energy. Because that's what happened with me. You know, your dad who's a raging alcoholic, he mad all the time, right? Soon as I was introduced to a punching bag.
What if you call a mana mentoring and nurturing association authority, I don't know, I just try.
No, it's good, it's good, I mean, you know, and you know why I like doing these podcasts? Or or I I think there's somebody watching this right now that will help us finish the solution.
Mentoring and nurturing advocates.
Dude, that's why this is so important, you know, it's long term conversation because, you know, uh. You know, there's magic in there, if people watching and they go, hmm, man, I'm gonna call these guys, we gonna put them together, and if you like steal ideas, steal them, I don't care.
Open patent, huh? Well, one of the questions we had, but you already, you already answered it really, like, he asked, how's your background? Helped you and affects what you do now, who you are now, but really, you've kinda described it, I mean. Being, having trials, whether it's children, their outcomes, their bullying, your your own struggles, being a boxer, being a hard worker. Uh, as you were talking, um, it would be unfortunate if you weren't, if you didn't speak out, if you didn't share, it would be unfortunate. It's a shame for someone to have a life like that and and then, you know, buy a house at twenty two, some financial principles, get in the market, appreciate. I I'm I I think we're lucky that you speak out and you you educate.
You know. Uh, I I just hope, I get, like, when this time, when I'm, when when God is. Called me to, you know, uh, go home. I just, I just hope that the time here. And the struggle is gonna be all worth it, you know what I mean, because it'll help change. Change people's thinking to not continue to make the same mistakes, right? That's why we have, you know, conversations like this, we hoping that that this will. Maybe um. Inspire somebody. You know, like. That guy, that guy, that guy's a simple guy.
So you, I guarantee this part, so this podcast is evergreen, so not only are you gonna inspire someone immediately, but probably many people. So I'd ask people who are out there, if you listen to this podcast and you are inspired and wanna help, reach out to Augie, what Instagram?
Instagram, um, yeah, that's the best way, email, you can always email me, Augie T LLC at gmail dot com. The reason why I feel like. I've been successful is because I surround myself with good people.
That's the, that's the trick.
And I have a family that's super supportive, you know, a wife that cannot stand me. This guy, he's good, he's good, you know, like, come on, why you don't bring that same energy home, you know what I mean, like? They know the flaws, right, and they have the last say in a lot of things that we do. And I'm lucky, man, that, you know, I have a wife that uh understands that I'm this. Crazy, like you said, obsessive guy, right?
We, guys like you and I, to to the extent that we're the same, we gotta have a, we gotta have a rock and a woman.
Yeah, and we hope that we not come home and our bags outside.
So let me ask you some parting questions, what, where's your favorite restaurant or where's your favorite place to eat? Oh, that's your favorite?
Angry angry goma, right, that's what I do, I get that. And I take my time and sometimes I take the broth home, I leave a little bit meat in, I leave. And I, one day old because, you know, we have this notion that if you keep them for one day. Later, all the thing even tastes better, so I always bring them some, wait one day, and then I add noodles, they're like from the regular ramen. Oh, the soup is so amazing, yeah.
My niece work over there. Ichiriki, okay, I'm gonna tell her, hook you up.
They know already.
They know.
I go there like maybe every two weeks, ask them.
And they get the like the bingsu, like the frozen shavai stuff. They know, huh?
They know, I like calling late or like every couple of weeks I'm popping in.
And and then what what about favorite local band or song? And you kinda in that world, so that's a tough one for you.
Yeah, oh, man. And my daughter's releasing a CD.
Oh, yeah?
A EP. Like K-pop, right, so, you know, until they get on K-pop, or maybe on H-pop band here in Hawaii. You know, I I love talk radio, uh, but back in the day, natural vibrations. You know, I like the green.
The green, yeah.
Like, you know, the crush.
He don't know, he's he's still learning. I tried to get some.
Kalapanha, you know, I'm an old school guy, so, yeah, I grew up listening to Kalapanha, C and K, so. You know, I like that, I like that vibe.
Okay, and who else should we have on this podcast? Who can you help us get on here? So we're gonna have Mahelani.
But you know what, now, I have a new podcast coming out too. The guest list, so. I'm gonna have you on my guest list. So my guest list, it's a cool concept, it's kinda like what, look, there's problems, find solutions. What's the solution to the problem?
When is it coming out?
Uh in a couple of weeks, we shoot our first podcast uh this week and I get. Uh the guy from Alun Farm, we talk about sustainability, why can't we grow enough food here? And then I'm gonna talk to my old partner Lanai.
Yeah, Lanai and Augie, you don't know, he's just from the man, you don't know about Lanai and Augie.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him like, geez, you still chasing a demon? You know, you still chasing a dollar bill or, you know, or uh, you know, our lives, you know. Dramatically changed, you know, we were the two guys that. You know, cause a lot of ruckus in the morning, uh we did a lot of things that I look back and I go, thank God, never have social media back then. I would probably never get elected, right?
Well, you know, that's powerful because you talked about how you used to knock on doors and you went through blue collar hard work and that's good, don't stop that, but. Producing a podcast like The Guest List with Augie, that's scalable. So you get to have a powerful conversation, elevate Hawaiian conversation and then distribute it and scale it to the masses, so that's awesome.
Kinda like this, right? We hoping that maybe something that we talk about steak and then people jump on them and go, ooh. Man, we'll add this and then maybe possible, possibility of solving some of the solutions with like homeless. You know, sustainability, how do we prepare ourselves in case a natural disaster? Or maybe just some simple conversation like, uh what you doing?
Or maybe you bring aloha to someone's day who is. In the ICU across the street. And that's maybe the last conversation of the year.
Absolutely, so I'm excited about that, you know, I still do morning radio on Decades One O Seven Nine. You know, music from the seventies, eighties and nineties and I'm enjoying that because every song that we played takes me back to that. One time. You know what I mean? And then I still do. Uh I do emcee work, I don't do it as much as I used to, but I still love going and emceeing, you know, party in the backyard because you stay connected to people. Right? I still do those things, I have a big show in October.
Your light gotta shine too, you cannot bottle it, you gotta let it out and shine and emcee, what what is your show in October?
It's called uh Laugh Under The Stars, so I've never performed. Comedy at the Waikiki Shell as a soloist. So right now, I got Big Every Time opening for me and of course, uh. One hundred percent of the proceeds will go to my daughter's foundation, Brave Hawaii, ticket prices, you ready? Start at ten bucks. I don't know anybody.
Oh, you gotta go there.
Okay, if you're a teacher, first responder, military, kupuna, student with ID. You get five dollars off every ticket and the and the ticket starts at forty bucks. So. It's a yearly event that I wanna put on so that we can have family, just, you know, you can bring. Like my dad never took us to concerts cuz he couldn't afford, we grew up in public housing. Whenever I could take my kids to a concert, it was like the amazing experience, right? Cuz I remember when my auntie took me to see Yvonne Elman. Yeah, especially like low kids, so part of the, some of the sponsorships we have, they pay for all these kids to come. We did it last year at the Hawaii Theater, we had kids from the U Challenge, Boys and Girls Club, man. Some of those kids will never ever have that opportunity to go to Hawaii Theater and watch on show. What dreams are we building in those young minds? It's the same concept with with Laugh Under The Stars, if I can get families to come, you know. You take advantage of your son's ID, go buy five tickets for five bucks. Or, you know, for twenty five bucks, you get your whole family, you get a night out, laughing, you know.
So where where we can buy tickets?
Blaisdell Box Office. Ticketmaster dot com.
Or Ticketmaster, so I writing them down right now. If you guys wanna see me and say aloha to me, I'm gonna be over there. So, right on, bro, thank you for just. Your light shining bright and sharing it with everyone, man, I appreciate it.
Thank you for reaching out and uh this is a fun conversation.
You know, one of my goals in this is to improve as a conversationalist, but uh. It's easy when someone is as passionate as you, I just appreciate it.